Park City Council Meeting is called to order. Administrator, call the roll. Then if there are no questions or comments.
I have a couple of questions.
Okay, if you would please go to the mic. Thank you.
My name is Ryan Sin. I'm at 458 Manor Drive. Can we ask general questions about the budget at this time? Is that what?
Sure.
So, I guess I would say that I'm here to represent the Spring Lake Park Citizens Committee. So if I can get my 10 minutes rather than my three minutes. I'm not sure if I'll have 10 minutes up front. We went through the budget and we had a couple of questions regarding... Can somebody tell me what the current balances are on the general fund? And what the unreserved balance of the general fund is at this time?
I can if you'll wait just a moment.
Sure. And if I could ask another question maybe you guys know. Has there been a comprehensive annual financial report for 2010? Has that been completed yet? The audit. Is that accessible to the citizens?
Yes, it is. Yes, it is, Ryan.
Yeah, we have a financial report here for...
Yeah, the only one I've had available so far is the 2009. So that's all I can really work off of.
This is 2010.
So, I guess forgive me if I ask some questions with those numbers and maybe we can update those numbers to what they are in 2010.
Ryan, what was that first request, the balance on the general fund compared to...
Yeah, just what's the balance on the general fund? And what's the unreserved balance of the general fund? So the total and then what we can actually...
According to my last report, the balance of the general fund is $903,487.
Sorry, could you repeat that?
$903,487.70.
And what of that is unreserved?
It all depends on your technology. I would say it's all reserved because we only get paid twice a year. We get paid in July and we get paid at the end of December. And so, the money we get at the end of December has to last us until the end of July. And so, we need that money to pay our bills for the first six months of the year.
I mean, I'm not disagreeing with that. I guess, you know, you have long-term debt and you have debt payments. And so, I guess what the city can put against the budget and the spending for 2012 is only what's in the unreserved portion of it, correct? I mean, the reserved portion is reserved for debt payments and continuing maintenance and things like that that are already earmarked, so...
Well, there are debt service funds that's separate from the general fund.
Okay. So I guess I'm just looking at... Looking at the financial report from 2009, it outlines separation in the general fund between reserved funds and unreserved funds based on what you have already allocated to debt management, debt payments, things like that, so...
What page is that?
In 2009, I would have to look at...
He was asking for a copy of the year ended December 31st, 2010.
Yes, he can have a copy of that, but he has to pay for it. I mean, he can come in and look at it at any time he wants to, but he'd have to pay for a copy of that.
Okay, so, that's fine. I mean, I'd like an electronic copy, I guess. If all the other years are posted...
We don't have them electronically.
Okay, 2009 is on the web, and 2008 and 2007. So, I guess that's not really what my issue is here. We can take that offline, I guess. So there is a 2010 available and that's fine. Could you outline... Could you tell me what the total expenses are for the Parks and Rec Department for 2010 based on the financial report? Right, but they're joined on the 2009 report. So I'm wondering if they're joined on the 2010 report? Because I know the city separates them, but the auditor doesn't.
Well, we're here to talk about the budget.
And I'm here to talk about the budget, too.
But we're not here to talk about 2010's audited statements.
Right.
So, you asked for that information in a public data request and I will provide that to you. But that isn't what this meeting is for.
Oh, well, I'll ask a pertinent question to 2011 then, without the 2010 numbers. So what is the operating budget of the recreational department versus the actual expenses of the recreational department? Because I guess what I'm seeing is I'm seeing a $50,000 every year, like even revenue amount that you're getting from the department.
Right, that is revenues we receive from trips and softball tournaments and those are user fees.
Right, okay. So when we're talking about taking cuts and we're talking about raising property taxes, we're spending almost $300,000 on a recreation department that's bringing in $50,000. That's a quarter of a million dollars that we're spending. That I would say, well, it could be quality of life, but I guess if I have to choose between whether I heat my home or whether I pay for gas in my car or whether I pay $250,000 for people to take trips and are paying almost $200,000... 200 and what is it? I'll... I guess I'll... Over $200,000 in salaries for that department. So, I'm just looking at... I like to talk about the budget, I guess, so...
Well, the salaries include the three full-time, one part-time office person and the rest of those salaries are very temporary part-time people that work at the playgrounds.
Now, is that parks or recreation? Because they're separated and I'll go to that. So we're looking at the 2012 budget for salaries for recreation is $201,000 with liabilities with health insurance and everything else, bringing it up to $260,000. And so, we're spending $260,000 for... And you know, our temporary people are $20,000 of that. So $240,000 of it is full-time personnel to take people on trips.
You do things from preschool all the way up to senior citizens. So it's not just trips.
And that's fine, but I guess if we're talking about raising our taxes, because whether we cut or not, our taxes have gone up. And if we're looking at a quarter of a million dollars here that we could cut out of the budget, then maybe we wouldn't take any trips for a year or two years or whatever.
The trips make money. They don't cost money.
They don't lose money.
They don't make money when you spend $280,000 in the budget and you bring in $50,000 in revenue. If you could tell me, are we making $330,000 on those trips?
No.
So we're spending $230,000.
No.
How does that... So our expenses are 200 and... What's the total on that? $279,229 budgeted for 2012. And you're saying that you're going to get revenue of $50,000 out of that, so...
What... Every year, we've been increasing what? We increase it... Two years ago, it was 48,000. They said we could go 50,000. So those dollars are what we have in excess over the program fees that we spend. So we hire instructors and things to do the classes and pay for all the materials and all the fees. The excess is what we're putting back into the general fund.
Right.
Right. The programs, a lot of the programs we do don't generate any fees at all. There are the playground programs, free programs for the kids. So you have the kids that, all summer long, their mom and dad are at work, they're at home, people can't afford daycare. And so, we're providing that service so the kids in the summertime, they can be out there and going to a program that are supervised with leaders and impacting the community in a positive way rather than having the kids just out and about running around or not supervised at all. So that's a free program we offer to the programs. We offer a lot of senior programs that are free. Those seniors that are staying in their homes and don't have a lot of contact with other people. Their lives are shrinking, their friends are dying off and we're keeping those contacts with them and they're making new friends through the programs we provide. So it's the quality of your senior citizens, of your children, of your adults being involved in getting to other people and staying active because they can't afford to go join the Y or go and do these more expensive things. We have a lot more low-cost programs offered for them to keep them engaged. So it's just a philosophy.
That's fine. I guess it's... I just would not like to call the programs free because somebody pays for them. I think we all... Those of us who live in the city pay for them.
You're absolutely right, but it's a user-free program.
But you know what? If you don't take care of the elderly, they take care of us. If you don't take care of the children, then the police department end up babysitting for them. So it kind of works kind of... You know what? You really need to go to a park and rec meeting so you understand what's happening there. We have a board, just like we have for planning and zoning. We have a board of commissioners that work for planning and zoning of citizens. You know, maybe if you set foot in there, you kind of see what's going on also.
And I guess I don't want to take up all of my time with that if I'm allowed to ask a few more questions on this.
Can I just make one comment? We did, two years ago, we did have a workshop on this with Barbara, the council, about... We had a study on park and rec and, you know, what they were bringing in versus their expenditures. And they did bring in money, but it costs money too. But it's a service. It's a service of the city. And at the time, we just felt that it is what it is and the citizens obviously like it, so we just stuck with it. Unless there's some sort of major change on the council that they all vote to, you know, remove that service. It is what it is. It's going to be there.
I can tell you that about 15 years ago, the council was seriously considering eliminating the recreation department. Do you remember that, Marion? And I can tell you that these two rooms were full of angry people. So, you know, if you don't participate, it has no value to you. If you and your kids participate, it has great value. So, like Marion said, it's a philosophy and it's a value issue.
I guess my question is just, we're subsidizing it. Whether we participate or not, it's being subsidized.
Yes, yes. There's no argument for that.
So, I mean, if people are crowding the rooms, then great. Then people can organize trips and do things. But when I looked... I guess my question with the 2010 budget is, when I look at the 2012 budget and I see that the budget for parks is $240,849, and we just talked about the rec department budget being $280,000. That comes to like 550. In 2009, according to the audit, the expenses for park and rec was actually $799,000. So if I could see that, if we could know what the 2010 numbers are, I mean, are these two budget numbers even close to what the actual expenses are? Or are there two different sets of numbers here? I mean, what's...
Well, numbers are shown for budgeting purposes in how we're going to spend it. According to the government finance regulations, those numbers appear differently in an audit. They aren't necessarily... You can't necessarily go back and forth and compare document to document.
Okay, so the actual park and rec budget provided in the budget, the 2012 budget is not... Does not match the audit, is what you're saying?
I don't know. I'd have to take your word for it. I'm not sure.
Well, it's, I mean, it's almost $200,000, $300,000 off, so...
You're up there looking at a book that we're not looking at.
You just have the 2010.
I have the 2010.
Right, so the 2000...
But you're looking at 9, right?
Well, I'm reading... If you could read me the 2010 park and rec expenses, I could tell you what the 2010 park and rec actual say on here. Here, we're looking at $250,000 for parks and we're looking at $266,000, so just over $500,000, it says, in 2010. So... But I think that's a serious topic for discussion, eh? If we're looking at raising taxes and raising rates on everybody and everything's going up and we're not getting LGA, that's $350,000. Then I guess, you know, I'd rather organize my own trips with my neighbors than have the city spend a quarter of a million dollars or half a million dollars organizing trips. So you can always do it again when, you know, stuff picks up, but... You know, I don't have to be elected, so I can ask the tough questions, right?
And we don't want to seem unresponsive either, but, you know, like you say, if there's two rooms full of people who want the program, then the council listens to that. If there's two rooms of people full that don't want the program, then they listen to that as well.
Do you know what that... You have that number?
I'm looking for it right now.
Yeah, and we very, very rarely ever have somebody come into the council meeting for any reason whatsoever. So, you know, it's nice to hear your opinions.
Okay, in 2010, I've got expenditures, parks and recreation. Recreation department, the original budget was 266,554. Actual was 259,546 spent.
Okay. So they must have started separating them as of 2010.
Yes, you see, because here they have expenditures for parks and recs and then they have expenditures for parks and forestry and then they have a total recreation and parks. So be sure you're not reading the total recreation and parks because that includes much more than recreation.
No, I'm reading page seven on the 2009 expenses.
The pages don't correlate.
Right, right, I understand that. And I guess I can get on to another question then. In the recreation, I should say, in the parks department... Sorry, my notes are a little out of place now. In the parks department, there's a 33% director on... It's page E17-1.
Right.
And then there's a 33% director in another department, which I'll pull up here.
Right, his salary is divided between parks, streets, water and sewer.
So there's a streets director, right, and a parks director.
No.
No.
I mean, they're 33% across.
It's one salary divided between four departments or three departments. But if it's 33 and 33 and 33.
Well, it's 33 and 33.
3 and then 12 and 1/2.
Water and sewer is 33, yeah. So it's one person.
Right, and I guess I understood that, but I was just... I mean, the 33% are only listed in two places and there isn't any indication that there's another director that has some sort of partial payment.
It's in the water and sewer budget, which is not part of the general fund.
So I guess that's why it's not in here. So, and then we've got the three 25% employees as well across multiple departments, but they're only listed three times. Is there a quarter that they're working for?
Well, it could be in the building and it could be in the sewer and it could be in the water.
And then, so, another thing with the... Let me see if I can find my notes here. We've got the... I guess we've got a city employee that's doing the janitorial work at the government center?
Yes.
And we're paying workers' comp on a separate fund for just that employee?
No.
So he's not getting workers' comp from any other... We're not paying him twice on that, are we?
No.
No.
So, because I know it's listed in here, so... I think...
As a matter of fact, that employee was never paid workman's comp.
We're budgeted for it.
We budget for the insurance, yes. I think Terry's wondering if you're thinking that he was out on workers' comp and we were paying him help.
No, no, not that at all. I just, I know it's insurance.
We did pay for insurance.
Yep. Yeah, I'm just looking to see where that was here in the government building. Can you tell me what the balance of the liquor fund is right now as well? Because I know it was a deficit in the last audit that I had seen.
Yeah, I can. 2012, 2011. And that's somewhat deceiving, too. We've not ever lost money. It becomes a deficit when we make the transfer. So it is making money. In the liquor fund, are you talking about the operating fund?
And the balance of the utility fund right now as well, too?
Public utility operations, $1,00836.363.
Thanks. So I guess, I mean, that's... Do we have... So you're saying that the liquor store always turns a profit? It's not a... I mean, I guess looking at the last budget, we're making maybe $50,000 on $600,000 worth of overhead with...
Right.
So, I mean, it's not like if I was running a business and I had $600,000 worth of expenses and I was pulling in $50,000 a year, I might be concerned in terms of long-term viability of that?
We are monitoring that, although we have not... And as a matter of fact, there's a state law that says if you lose money three years in a row, you have to go to a levy of the people to decide if you want to close the store. But we have not lost money in any year. It goes into deficit when we make the transfer, which is, you know, on paper.
Yep.
But remember that the primary purpose of having municipal liquor is to control the sale of liquor in the city. Secondary is to earn revenue.
We could just close down and not allow any sales, right?
Sure.
So...
And then your taxes would go up.
But we do... Yeah, your taxes would go up because we do transfer $150,000 from the liquor fund to the general fund. So then that would, you know, if all things staying the same, our levy would be $150,000 more.
Okay.
And Ryan, I guess at this time, you've had more than 10 minutes.
I appreciate your time.
And I believe you can come into the city and talk with people anytime you want. I mean, it's public.
My issue is, I mean, I'll stop, is that I think the city could do a lot more and we've talked about this for 10 years now. Meeting minutes are still not online since last year, year before. 2009 is the last meeting minutes, the audit, you know, and then asking for documentation. If we could just get that electronically, it seems silly for me to come down and pay a fee for you to copy it when we're already having email communications.
If I don't have it... If I have it electronically, I told you I could get 11 and 12 to you, no problem. But when you're asking for 2007, I don't have it electronically. I've got to go up to the archives. I have to pull all that information together. I don't have it electronically and I'm not required under the law to provide it.
And we don't pay for enough people to put it on.
Well, I'm just... I'm asking, I'm talking in terms of the 2010 audit, where you could tell me that I'd have to pay for it.
If our accountant has a disk, she can send it to you. But I'm not aware of that. But she might, she may very well.
Previous years are available, but this year's is not, so...
Well, actually, we just got it.
We just got it.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Well, thank you. Appreciate your time.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Would anyone else like to speak?
Is now the appropriate time to question the tax scenario? Or is that coming up yet?
No, this is the time.
Okay. I guess I'm here to get educated more than anything.
Could I hear your name, sir?
Stan Yoakum, 821 Madison Street. I would imagine most everybody in the city is a little perplexed here and Barb did a wonderful job of explaining why the tax... Proposed property tax for 2012 is rather shocking in view of what's going on with the market value scenario. And I just want to know if this seems reasonable. According to my proposed tax statement here, my house value is down 15.27% and the city budget is going up or the city tax levy is going up about 7%. So is that reasonable? Who knows?
I'd say no, I don't think it is reasonable. But that's a function, not of city spending, but it is a function of the state change in how they calculate taxes.
So the city basically has no control, is what you're saying?
We have control over what we spend and what we spend it for, but we have no control over the formula that the state applies. No, we do not.
So our choices as a citizen is to lobby the state legislature, I guess. And that's about it, huh?
Correct.
Heavily, heavily.
Yeah, well, it's not that, you know... It's unreasonable in total. I think probably we're getting our money's worth. I don't have any complaints there, but the numbers just don't stack up when you look at your proposed property tax levy for next year versus last year when your house value supposedly is going down 15%.
Right, you know, in the good years, when our values were going up, our taxes were going up and, you know, everything... Everybody was still upset, but you could understand it if your value was going up and if you could sell your house for that amount of money. And now values are going down and your taxes are still going up. No, that's not right. And nobody here, I don't think, would agree with it. And I was shocked to see values go down when I got my statement. I thought, I think, two years ago, they said we'd hit bottom on that already, but it's still going down right now.
We're down 40%, you know? It's just ridiculous.
You know, and that's the other thing with the city budget is the values go down, our tax base goes down, and now with the homestead exclusion, they're taking a bigger chunk out of that smaller number. And then you take away all the tax-exempt properties, the high school, the building next door, which is the administration building for the school. We have a mindod station. We have eight churches. One of them takes up an entire city block. Our parks, our city, you know, that's in two square miles.
Sure.
It's amazing.
Aren't you getting a lot of calls from citizens regarding, you know, a 7% or 8% increase when we...
Not everybody has experienced that and no, I've gotten one call.
Really? I tried to call today, but no answer.
I heard the most from Mr. Dahl.
The other... Yeah. The other comment that's important, too, is that, you know, we've had a couple of referendums on the school. As you can see, that high school over there.
Yeah, we're talking about the city.
Well, I'm talking about tax increases also.
Yeah, I understand that.
Yeah, we had a levy go through the school.
Sure, sure.
And we had a levy go through the city. Now we just had another referendum that just passed on another tax increase go. And what I don't think is fair is that, you know, it went to the voting table, but it was basically an increase for property taxpayers. So people that didn't have to, you know, don't own, they still have to vote. So that's what I don't think is fair as why, you know...
But we didn't have a levy or a referendum on city tax increases this year, did we?
No.
No.
Okay, so you're saying the taxes are... In general, the budget is down overall, but my property taxes for the city is still going up 7% and the value of my house went down 15%.
It's a shame.
Doesn't try.
No, it doesn't.
All right, thank you. Good time.
I always think of the young people who bought a house for $180,000, $190,000 and the value then has just gone down, yet they've got to make... their, the value then has just gone down, yet they've got to make that payment on that steep value. Jeez. I mean, I paid only $25,900 for my house, so to watch it go from $179,000 down to about $100,000 now, you know, doesn't, again, doesn't hurt me, I mean, doesn't hurt me as much as it would if I had paid that and then everything can then...
And it go down.
So, I mean, you can see why they're foreclosing. They can't afford the payments and it's a mess.
Go ahead, Jason.
Jason Letourneau, 8001 Fifth Street. Uh, I actually only have a question for Barb. You had said that 19% of the properties in Spring Lake Park are not on the tax rolls?
Are tax exempt, that's right.
Do you know which properties and what percentages they hold? Like, the high school, what percentage they hold?
Um, we do.
Do you have the breakdown?
I do, not right here with me.
Okay. I, I just was asking, because I was figuring that the high school had to have been at least a 10% increment.
You, you know, in, in addition...
It's at least that.
Yeah.
We do have the numbers.
So, then I'm thinking about the one church over in the corner. That's another 4%, but...
Park Terrace Elementary.
But I just, you, you had said that no other city has that high, but again, we also have two big schools in our city also.
Yeah, but we're only two square miles, so...
You're right. So, a high school is a very big piece of property.
Exactly. So, you know, when you consider Blaine with a high school, um, it has a lot less impact.
We're talking 400 square miles.
You know, so it has a lot less impact. The only other city in Anoka County that has tax exempt property anywhere near ours is Anoka, because they've got all the city government and they've got the county. Um, but most other cities are between 2% and 4%, and we're 19%.
Right.
It's very painful.
Okay, that's all I was asking.
We have those breakdowns, Jason, if you want us to send you the email by PDF.
Sure, if you're good.
I can do that.
Is there anyone else? Thank you for your comments and for coming in tonight. So, at this time, we have, we go on to resolutions and/or ordinances.
We have to close the hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, at this time, we will close the truth and taxation hearing and then go on to resolutions and/or ordinances. And under that, we have resolution adopting final 2011 taxes payable in 2012.
That's Mayor Resolution 11-26.
11-26.
I'll move to approve for the total levy of $3,326,770.
A motion has been moved by Councilmember Mason to adopt the resolution number 11-26. Any questions? Hearing none. Administrator, call the roll.
Councilmembers Mason?
Aye.
Carlson?
Aye.
Dahl?
Aye.
Nash?
Aye.
And Mayor Hanson?
Aye.
Thank you. And if there isn't anything else at this time?
Move to adjourn.
A motion has been made by Councilmember Mason to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
This council meeting is adjourned.